It is now seven PM and I am reconvening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Carubis.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Grover. Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
And Mr. Rising.
Here.
We have a quorum. Ms. Grover, will you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next board meeting will be held on Monday, January twenty-third. Our next topic is Student Representative Report by Saad Karashi from Matia Valley High School. What?
I mean, I can go with the back down if we have any.
Oh, sorry. Okay. I'm sorry. Do you have a board salute? Sorry. Okay, yes, one board salute tonight.
Board salutes. Illinois Principal Association Building Bridges Award. The board salutes Wabonzi Valley Assistant Principal Charles Bibbs and the Wabonzi Valley High School pages for receiving the Illinois Principal Association Reaching Out and Building Bridges Award. This award recognizes a principal or assistant principal and an agency, association, or community member who have collectively displayed an outstanding effort in creating partnerships between schools, principals, associations, and organizations for the betterment of all. Congratulations unto all.
Okay, now we're gonna welcome Saad.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, everyone. My name is Saad Karashi and I'm the Executive Board Representative for the class of two thousand and twenty-three, and I'm very excited to be here with you all tonight. This year, we were able to bring back another fantastic year of hot chocolate with Marty the Mustang, sponsored by MV Stugel. Every Friday in December, staff and students were welcomed into the school with a cup of hot chocolate to start their day. Hot chocolate was also accompanied by the live music performances provided by our very talented Mustangs. Academic Planning Night took place on Wednesday, December fourteenth. The program consisted of presentations on topics such as course selection for the upcoming school year, school links, dual and advanced placement credit, post-secondary options, and much more. Collage and magical events took place the first two weeks of December, serenading hundreds of students, parents, and guests. Keep up the great work, talented Mustangs. Parent-teacher conferences went off without a hitch. Parents were able to connect with teachers and learn more about their students' progress throughout the year. Matia Valley was able to host a Veterans Day Assembly on November eleventh. The assembly was held to honor the lives of those brave people who have served our country and put their lives on the line. Matia Valley thanks all veterans for their service. Members of the Principal Advisory Board attended the toy drive that was hosted by the Autism Family Supports Association and the Malone Family that took place on December seventeenth at the Stonebridge Country Club. Members came out and helped pack some amazing toys and gifts for kids and their families to enjoy this holiday season. Matia Valley Student Government was able to raise over five hundred dollars for the Northern Illinois Food Bank. This money allowed many families to get food and enjoy this holiday season. Winter sports were, winter sports seasons are underway and are doing extremely well. MVHS will be hosting the Great Todd Dip Hall Freshman Wrestling Tournament on January fourteenth. MVHS hosted its first dance event on December seventeenth, which was a great success. Over twenty schools participated in the event. To put the cherry on the cake, Matia Valley's varsity dance team received a qualifying score to participate in the IDTA state competition in Palm. Great job, Mustangs. And I'm sure I missed out on some of them, so you're just gonna have to stop by our trophy case to see all the hard hardware that our Mustangs have earned. That's all for the December board report. Thanks, everyone. Have a great and safe holiday season. And as always, go, go Mustangs!
Okay, it's now time for public comment, and thirty minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups, and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age-appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents. So we ask that you to state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. So tonight, we have one speaker, and the person is Sunil Narayana. Hi, Sunil.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you once again for this opportunity. This is the last board meeting for this calendar year, so I'm here to summarize some of the things that I've been speaking to you all these last few months, and also place a request. The request is to please consider doing a reassessment of the IDOT Serious Safety Assessment for that particular junction, which is the Montgomery Frontal Space. The reason I'm placing this is, in the last few occasions where I had an opportunity to come and present some of the things to you folks, we highlighted primarily the safety aspect of it because there were literally numbers that we got from the police department where there were on an average of one police incident happening per week. And so that is one. And also, the level of traffic that has increased over the period and a lot of other factors, which we found were not clearly reflected in the last assessment that Mr. Ron Johnson had shared with us, which was done in two thousand and twenty, twenty-something. So this is a request to consider doing one reassessment, and please add your judgment to it, looking into the safety of the kids, which is the prime concern for which I repeatedly come here. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our Consent Agenda and Superintendent Report, and we will start with the Superintendent Report, Dr. Tally.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. Members of the Board of Education. Tonight, sitting with us is Victoria, who is one of the student members of the board, so we're happy to have her with us today. We will have another Parent Academy on January twenty-sixth. This virtual event is focused on coaching your child through big emotions, and the event will start at seven PM. You will be able to find information about this on our website. We want to thank all who supported our McKinney Vento families and families in need through the donations from IPEF and their Kids Essential Fund, donations from IPPC, the Samaritan Network, Nikma Valley High School Student Council, Kiwanis of Naperville, and an anonymous donor. More than thirty thousand dollars was donated. Funds were used to purchase gift cards for more than three hundred families, and our theme this year is about community, and the community did come together to support each of us, and I want to thank all those who were involved. We have a full house tonight, and so I want to ask that the board approve the following personnel appointments as principals. Ms. Tara Fowler for White Eagle. Ms. Fowler is currently a Director of Core Curriculum, Grade Six through Eight. Before coming to Indian Prairie, she served as Principal of a Junior High School in District three oh eight. She also was an Assistant Principal for several years and taught English Language Arts. Ms. Fowler was a strong candidate because of her focus on equity and student achievement. She is looking forward to being back in a school setting. Ms. Jill Keller Georgetown Elementary School. Ms. Keller is currently Principal of Cisnero Elementary School in Chicago. She also serves as an Assistant Principal and English Language Arts Social Studies teacher in various districts. Ms. Keller's experience creating a strategic plan and increasing student achievement were strong attributes for her candidacy for principalship. Ms. Kaitlyn Kimpfsky Maywatt Elementary School. Ms. Kimpfsky is currently the Student Service Coordinator at Brooks Elementary School. She also had experience as an interventionist and a third and fourth grade teacher. During her interviews, she distinguished herself in her understanding of the school improvement process as well as understanding how important it is to establish positive relationships with students, staff, and the community. Ms. Rachel Witkowski Graham Elementary School. Ms. Witkowski is currently a Student Services Coordinator at Peterson Elementary School. She also serves second grade and third grade teacher and a special education teacher. What stood out in her interview was her strong belief in ensuring that all students demonstrate growth and that it was a responsibility of school staff to create the space for student academic and social emotional growth. And finally, Mr. Daniel DeBrucker Matia High School. Mr. DeBrucker is currently an Assistant Principal at Matia. Before his current role, he served as an Athletic Director both in Indian Prairie and District three oh eight and was a mathematics teacher in District one fifty-five. During his interview, he talked about how he will use relationship building to expand rigor and relevance in the school. It was evident that he has some goals in mind for the school. I do want to wish all of these new principals a great experience going forward, and we are here to support them. And as this is our last meeting before winter break, I hope everyone has a wonderful winter break. Ms. Donahue, back to you.
So usually, for the past year, when we saw a big audience, it made us very nervous. So, but tonight is a very joyous time, and I will say that we were all concerned when we saw how many principals we were having to replace this year because of retirement and the strong leadership those principals provided to the district. So we're thrilled to go through the approval for the new set. So I need a motion to approve Dan DeBrucker as the Principal at Matia Valley High School as presented.
Before I make that motion, can I ask Dan to stand? And Dan, if I could embarrass you and your family, could you, because this is truly, taking on a principal role within our district is truly a family affair, and I want you to be able to have the pleasure of introducing your family.
Absolutely. Thank you. This is my wife Jenna, my son Evan, who is a seventh grader at Yorkville Middle School, my daughter Avery, who is a freshman at Yorkville High School, and my youngest, Elaine, who is a fourth grader at Bruce Bay Elementary in our neighborhood in Yorkville.
Wonderful. With that, I will make a motion that the Board of Education approve Dan DeBrucker as the Principal at Matia Valley High School as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Grover. Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Aye.
And Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
The motion passes. Next, I need a motion to approve Kaitlyn Kimpfsky as the Principal at Maywatt's Elementary School as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Kaitlyn Kimpfsky as the Principal at Maywatt's Elementary School as presented.
Is there a second? Let's go through the second and then we'll...
Yes, the second first.
I'll second that, I'll second that motion, and we'd like to ask Ms. Kimpfsky to stand, and please share any of your family and friends that are with you, please.
Sure. This evening tonight is my husband, Mitch. At home are our three children, Ellie, Austin, and Matt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We didn't vote yet, Allison, but yeah. We'll assume.
Michelle, will you call the roll?
I hope it passes.
It is just a happy, joyous night tonight.
Okay, Ms. Fosdick.
Yes!
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Grover.
The motion passes. Oh, yay. So now I need a motion to approve Jill Keller as the Principal at Georgetown Elementary as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Jill Keller as the Principal at Georgetown Elementary School as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Keller here.
Any discussion?
Ms. Keller?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And would you like to introduce your family and friends?
I am here by myself tonight. My husband is home with our daughter, Scott, feeling well. I have a nine-year-old daughter at home and a twenty-one-month-old son.
Oh, wonderful. Okay, any discussion? All right. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
And Mr. Rising.
Yes.
The motion passes. Oh, yay. So I need a motion to approve Rachel Witkowski as the Principal in a second at Graham Elementary School as presented.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve Rachel Witkowski as the Principal of Graham Elementary School as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Rachel, do you have anybody here with you?
Do I? We always come in good, so I have my husband Ryan here, I have my dad and my mom both here with us, my sister Kristen, and then, of course, the two best, McCana, who is a seventh grader at Rooker Junior High, and Benson, who's a sixth grader from Murphy Junior High as well. And I wouldn't, I'd be remiss that my outgoing, you know, retiree, Claudia Walton, is also here today, and I'm very honored to take her place at Graham.
All right, any discussion? Michelle, will you call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
The motion passes. And our last one is I need a motion to approve Tara Fowler as the Principal at White Eagle Elementary as presented.
I move that the Board of Education approve Tara Fowler as the Principal at White Eagle Elementary School as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Tara?
Tara, can you stand, please, and tell us who's...
Well, I'm playing solo tonight. My children, you know, they can't put on real pants. They're in middle school. I'm a six grader at home, and apparently we don't wear real pants anymore. We're in pajama pants. So they're at home. My husband, Jason, is still at work, but my CEC family is there.
All right.
So I'm grateful for them and for the opportunity.
Okay, any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue.
Yes. The motion passes. So congratulations to everyone, and we look forward to the fantastic things that you'll be doing for our students in the district and families, so thank you. Next, we move to our Consent Agenda items. I need a motion in a second. I need a motion in a second to approve Consent Agenda Items I through R. All right, I think we can go ahead. All right, I need a motion in a second for Consent Agenda Items I through R.
I make a motion for Consent Agenda Items, would it be G through?
I through R.
I through R?
Yeah.
Okay, I through R.
I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Michelle, will you call the roll?
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Carubis.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Aye.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
The motion passes. I thought you were gonna make a comment about the Consent Agenda item, the air conditioning.
It's a little, it's, all right, I'm gonna comment even though it's procedurally wrong. So on Consent Agenda, K and L, we are, which is elementary air conditioning. It's my pleasure to finally be able to realize the completion of elementary air. As a student, having gone through the district, Klow was not air-conditioned, and Hill was not air-conditioned. So this is a great accomplishment that we have done. We have done this without passing a referendum. We've done it in an efficient way, where we didn't reduct the whole elementary school. It's taken us a long time to do it, over many years, and done piecemeal, but I think that has been deliberate and appropriate. So I am, you know, almost five decades old, and it's great to see that we are putting air conditions in all of our elementary schools.
Thank you. Okay, next, we move to our action items, and I need a motion in a second to approve the high school social studies course as presented.
I move that the Board of Education...
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's just not in my face. I believe, I move that the Board of Education approves the high school social studies courses as presented.
A second? Any discussion?
I, I do. Superintendent Tally, when does, when will the, can you just remind me when? Mr....
Ms. Purcell.
Sorry. Ms. Purcell, can you share, just remind me, when will this be in effect as far as the, looking at the new curriculum?
Mike, do you wanna, do you wanna go up there?
Thank you for your question. The proposal is to have these in the coursebook for students to select to enroll in for next year.
And I'm assuming, go ahead.
And I just wanna, I think part of the question is also the review of the resources and all that would happen this summer, this, this fall, this winter, spring, what have you. So the two courses, you know, the word, the two things we're talking about, one is the ninth grade human geography class. Truth is, that group has already met a handful of times. They, they helped really craft a good deal of the meat of what I shared with you at the November twenty-first meeting, right, because they're the experts on the content of that. So they've met a couple times already, started talking about this, but certainly not moving forward with students or enrollments until we have this discussion here, right? The AP Human, AP US Government Class actually already exists, right? We have to do some work to kind of say, what does this look like if it's not connected to the comparative government class? And both of those will need new resources. We are very much in the mindset of, we want to be really intentional about what is it that we want kids to know, understand, and be able to do? And then, once we're done with that, to come back and say, all right, here are some resources that can help our students and help our teachers to help our students, right? So sometimes, those things will come together, but more, more often, they're gonna come separately because we really have to spend some time really figuring out what we want kids to know, understand, and be able to do, and then go to say, all right, now that we have a really full understanding of that, come back and say, what are some resources to help us to do that? The variety of resources is so much more vast than it was even when I started doing this, between things that are physical, digital, maybe both, right, things that are open source, all of those pieces, that we really want to look at the whole field, and we really can't do that until we're pretty deep into the curriculum work itself. Is that more answer you were looking for?
It does, but I guess just from the entire resource, research, when, how, what length of time are we anticipating?
Yeah, so we anticipate that we'll come back, well, certainly in the spring with, for both of these. Probably be coming sooner than that, talking about another class, our Spanish One class I mentioned last time. So those things that we'll talk about, that are on the five-year curriculum cycle, those things will come. Certainly, we want to get those sooner rather than later, because we want to get them into teachers' hands before we get moving along. But a big piece of that is getting them a lot of input in that process, right? So we talk about that piece, and obviously, the technology piece are huge factors in our decisions when it comes to bringing those before the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Purcell, just one quick question, more regarding the ninth grade social studies. So I understand that this will take place in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. A lot of those selections, the explaining to the students, the outgoing eighth graders, which is gonna probably start taking place in January or February, I'm assuming that administration will let those counselors know at the different middle schools to give them the same messaging in the courses that are offered, you know, the description of the course and appropriate, appropriately place them, and I'm assuming those discussions will happen.
Absolutely. We've already had those preliminary plans in place, and they're, they're ready to sort of fire off beginning, and hopefully, just a few minutes now.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Been working very hard on that. Those are very important things. Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Fosdick.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Grover. Mr. Carubis. And Ms. Demming.
Yes, yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Okay, spend one of those nights all the way around, yeah. I need a motion in a second to approve Wright and Company to be the district's architect for the master facility plan as presented.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Education, oh, sorry, I'll make a motion that the Board of Education approve Wright and Company to be the district's architect for the master facility plan as presented, and I'd also just like to point out that, and thank them for showing up tonight, if they're in the back. So I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I'll second. Okay, any discussion? Would you like to say a few words, Dr. Tally?
I will, I don't know if I can add to what's happening tonight, but I will try. We did a very complete process in determining who would be the architect with whom we would work on our facilities plan. The process including, included people from our school staff, central office staff, to engage with them because they could provide an opinion about who we should hire. We were very pleased with all of the companies that did apply, and we're very excited about the one that we went with, with Wright and Company. This is the beginning of the process that we will use. We will come back in January with a...
with a final contract that will be approved by the board.
Okay, any discussion? Michelle, will you please call the roll?
I'll try.
I got this.
Mr. Rising?
Yes.
Ms. Demming?
Aye.
Ms. Fostick?
Yes.
Mr. Carubis?
Yes.
Ms. Grover?
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue?
Yes, motion passes. Yay, that was a big one. All right, next up, we will have our presentation from Doug Akiris regarding our summer learning program.
Good evening, Dr. Tally and Board of Education. Thank you for your time this evening. Just wanted to take the opportunity to review our summer of learning from last year, and then just give a little bit of insight into our summer of learning for the upcoming summer. This does go right along with strategic plan priority one, which is about focusing on student development. And in this direct, um, objective, it talks about high-quality curriculum and instruction to help students meet all standards, and so that's under strategy four under that one. You'll also see about the expansion of summer learning. As I said, it'll review summer of 2022 and discuss summer of 2023. You're gonna see in here a lot of programs that occurred last summer. I do want to thank, we had a lot of people putting in a lot of effort to try to pull off all of the summer work. We did add last summer by adding our STEM camp, and then a few other things throughout with our grants. We added some additional summer work. You probably recall, just a few summers ago, prior to the pandemic, we, we really had Summer Bridge, our online summer learning, and then we also had, at that time, our ESY. So we built a lot into our summer programming, and, and there's, as I said, a lot of staff to thank, support staff, teaching staff, as well as many administrators. So reviewing from last summer, it really kicked off for us with our Club Hub Summer 2022. This is from the 21st Century. In Longwood, this is the grant that we received. It's a five-year grant, $300,000 a year, provides after-school supports as well as for the summer. And you'll see when we started, we started with some informational Zoom meetings and a field trip, and then went into our Camp Invention, which really has a STEM focus, which lasts for three weeks, and then we finished off with some more family engagement and another field trip. Last summer, one of the things we added, and this is through our Peace of Mind Grant, which is our community partnership grant, we did expressive arts Zoom camp, and you'll see that we had a lot of participation throughout the summer. This is where we had an Aurora artist, Laura Lynn. She supports a lot of our grant programs and does a fantastic job of, of interacting with students, and it was a really popular, a new addition to our summer for students to be involved, and, as I said, it really focusing on those expressive arts. Then we had our funds still coming from S R 2. These were actually the last of our S R 2 funds, as we move into S R 3 is what we're currently spending. Those did need to be spent by last year. We spent close to $700,000 on supplies, and this is where we sent books home and math kits. I'll talk a little bit about that on the next slide, as well as that early childhood, and we did all that by sending in a home in totes. You also see, we spent some on teacher leadership. This was really about, and we'll talk about that on one of the following up slides, and then $280,000 for our in-person. This went towards the summer boost as well as the bridge programming. So in those totes, we had our summer book packs, so all of our K through five students by grade level. Last year, the addition was adding the hands-on math kits, kits to be included in that. And then we had our Learning at Home Literacy for our early childhood students. We did do those as well for students who need bilingual services to, so that they can get that in their home language as well as in English. And then we did additional things for our students who are McKenney Vento, which falls in the homeless arena. Family engagement, that was what we had last year. So what we did was also set up 16 different opportunities where students could jump on and discuss some of that summer reading or have those, just a chance to either ask questions or share, just another opportunity to be able to discuss. We don't always, we send the books home with them, but there's not always a lot of opportunities to have that discussion. We didn't have that the previous year, and so this year, we added that. And once again, we thank our teachers who jumped on to, to host those Zooms. Our Boost Camp, these are the ones that are in-person. We, last year, we had, we were only able to do about 10 days. We had done 12 days the previous summer. Part of that was challenges. We do provide free transportation during this. It's a free opportunity. And last year, what happened is our ESY extended until July 19th, which means we did not have transportation available until the 20th. And so we went from the mid of that week and then the following two full weeks before we jump back into basically new teacher educate, orientation and stuff starts after that. One of the other challenges that we've had over the summer is, we've had a lot of construction going on, so we had to choose different buildings across the district that had some availability. Last year was even a little more challenging, because we had the delivering of all the air conditioning units, and so we had to work around not being in any classes that were also around the LMC. So we looked for which buildings had segments that were not near that area, where we had five or six classrooms connected that we could also host there. This really focused on literacy and math instruction. You'll see, we invited 625. We had 454 attended. We do do kind of a rolling. We reach out to families first, pretty much through email. Then we try to follow up with families by phone call. As families tell us, either they're not available, they might not be available because they have other plans for the summer, or they might not be responsive, or they're moving. There's many different things that go on, and then we continue to try to invite additional people to take those slots. At a certain point, we kind of have to stop inviting people. Similarly, at the middle school, we invited about 315. We had 146 attended, same dates. We were also restricted on some of our schools that we were able to use. So actually, Gregory Scullen, at Scullen, we had Still and Fisher together at Fisher, and then Granger and Hill together. And that was at Hill. That, for middle school this year, we did do a Camp Invention type of focus as well for middle schoolers, which was really a STEM-related activities and approach. Elementary was two hours a day and middle school, three hours a day. Just so you have an idea of the students attending, when you look at these two lists for elementary, 20.5% of our elementary students overall are identified as low-income, receive free or reduced lunch. For our summer programming, that was 37.9% of the students, and so you see 10.6% of our students overall at elementary have an IEP versus almost 20% of our students in summer boost. These are students typically that did not qualify for ESY services and joined our summer programming, and you'll see similarly for our English language learners. And then that last one, we added on there, just because we had that discussion about. Who attended for our summer boost were identified as students who were chronically absent during the year. You see similar numbers at the middle school, all of them pretty much higher for our summer boost program, and students that we identified to come in to receive extra supports. We also just wanted to show a little bit of our race or ethnicity breakdown, some of that demographic information, and this just gives you an opportunity to see what those statistics look like versus the school year, what the makeup of our students are, and then the makeup of our students who were in our summer boost programs, both at elementary and middle school. Overall, just a little bit about our attendance. We, as I said, we do provide free transportation to all students who are interested. We overall invited 940 students. We had about 600 who attended. Students that attended every day, and remember, this year, it was for 10 days, was just slightly under 30%. Our average daily attendance rate was about 66%. We did try to identify and compare, how did students perform on I-ready information, both in the spring and then in the fall. We did see an increase in our ELA performance at both elementary school and middle school, and that's just looking at those two, you know, just trying to look at it compared to regular growth and how they grew. And we do feel like it also alleviated some of that summer slide in math. Typically, you see quite a bit of a drop for students actually in math, because they're, you know, end of third grade on there, you're identifying those skills for third grade, and then fourth grade, you're, you're trying to assess where they are with fourth grade skills at the beginning of fourth grade. A lot of times in math, you do see a dip, and we do feel like we did a little bit to, to try to minimize that dip. We also, where we added an enrichment program was our STEM camp. This was very popular. We did two one-week STEM camps in the morning. It was $125 was the cost. We do, students who qualify for free and reduced lunch or fee waivers, we do use that as well in the summer programming. We did have to cut off last year. We had a lot of people interested. It is a great value. The first session, we held at Hill and the second at Crone. And as I said, it was tuition-based, three hours a day for four days, and if you had a chance to stop by, you would have seen a lot of smiles throughout, in all of our summer programming. It's really a great vibe when you get out to the buildings, and people just kind of happy to be there, and a lot of good learning and interacting occurring. Then we had our Summer Bridge. This is where we look at the three high schools and we identify students to just try to help them be a little bit more confident to start the year, get to know the school a little bit, get to know a little bit about what their expectations are for them for the following year. We followed those 10, same 10 dates, because we also provide transportation for that programming. And then credit recovery. We had 214 students who earned a total of 309 semester credits. Remember, these are students who might have gone off track in being able to have enough credits to graduate on time. We did notice that during the pandemic, we saw a higher number of students who did get off track, and so over the last two summers, we had a lot of students who were catching up. Some of those students might have been very close to getting those credits in the coursework, so it's just a short amount of work that they might have to do. We do see that we're, we're probably getting back on track with that, and we'll probably see quite a bit less credit recovery occurring over the summer, as a lot of that is done throughout the year, when they notice that students might be getting off track with their credits. Sometimes we see that over the summer, because we, we have some seniors that might not pass their classes those last semesters, trying to get them caught up as, as well. Our online learning, we had our highest attendance for our online learning last summer, which was 1,787 total number of students. That was at $185 per class, and those are opportunities for them to go ahead and get credit, and that has just grown in, in popularity. So for this upcoming summer, we have a lot of dates identified. Our, our elementary academic boost would start July 17th and go for three weeks. We do have the full time this year. We've made sure that we're in a good situation with our transportation. ESY would be ending that previous week. We are looking at middle school and high school of whether we need a little bit more time but less days, as we look at how can we maybe increase or improve our attendance, because you probably noticed, we had a lot of students we invited who didn't take us up on it. And then in addition to that, our attendance, we're not really thrilled with our attendance. You know, and so we think that we want to look at different opportunities. Maybe if we shorten it to two weeks, we might have more people available to attend, and then just keep them a little bit longer, but those are all different things that we're trying to work through with that. We have our dates identified for our STEM camps again, and you'll see both in June and July there. Our high school online courses, which are gonna, just about ready to go and are gonna go live for students to be able to register for that. And then we have our competitive grant summer offerings for the Longwood and Georgetown again for 21st Century, and we're actually adding some more summer programming through the Freedom Schools, which is Granger, McCarty, Cala Shaw, and Gomber. Those will be running for six weeks, and those dates are to be determined. Once again, just our Club Hub's gonna look very similar than it did last year for our Georgetown and Longwood students. We're actually being audited this year. I'm working on that right now. You do get audited at least once for a compliance visit in your five years, so this is our year. And so they won't be auditing during our summer programming, but we'll be doing that during our after-school opportunities, and they pick one of the schools. I believe they're doing Longwood, and that'll be around April. Dr. Tal and I both will get to be interviewed at that time as well about our programming. Our 204 online summer learning, we will still be offering, which I think is a great value, is the 185 per course. It's been at that price for quite some time. Next year is after this summer, but the following summer might be an opportunity where we have to look at increasing that, as teaching rates have increased as well. And those are the offerings we had, and as I talked about the dates, we're currently in the preparation for all those and trying to identify how many students are gonna be interested in taking our courses again, and just preparing to see how many educators will take us up on that. For the rest of our preparation for summer, we're still discussing planning with building administration. We'll be identifying our summer coordinators again. I know Andy Feckety is gonna be interested in doing STEM camp again, so I'm excited about that. We're, we're looking if we'll have the same or part same for some of our summer boost coordinators. Dr. Bell does a lot in trying to organize a lot of our grant summer opportunities. We are still gonna be struggling with some logistics of construction projects. ESY usually gets first. We're not running at the same time, but we still look at, if a building's being used for ESY, they still need to have typically maintenance and service done, and might need a different part of the summer, so we try to avoid a lot of our schools that are being used for ESY, and then just identifying where construction projects are at. We are looking forward to the following year, when we might have less summer projects going on, and we can look at possibly some summer learning being done in students' home schools, which might also include, increase some of the attendance and students accepting the invitations. We feel pretty good about our dates, but the late locations are really what we're still trying to finalize. We also have a lot of, you know, I think some of our pavement being worked on and those types of things, which can also, we might have a building, but we don't have like the drop-off area, so we have to try to think, you know, what are other areas can we use for dropping off as well? And then we, we, we have struggled the last two years in recruitment of teachers. That is common among a lot of school districts, where they're struggling to get enough teachers to come in. Work's been very hard during the year, and so trying to get people to commit over the summer, and they also have summer plans, and, and many of them have their own families and, and trying to identify that. We have heard of some school districts trying to get creative in how they can recruit staff, and we'll be listening to what they do as well to, to see if we have staff who are interested and willing to support our students in the summer as well. So with that, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. I think we're gonna start with our student representative, Victoria. We would love to hear any questions you might have.
Hi, Victoria.
Hello, good evening. So I'm a junior at Nigga Valley High School, and our school every year likes to send out a survey, asking students like, what do we think would encourage more students to? a survey, asking students like, what do we think would encourage more students to enroll in AP classes? And this year, they asked us if summer enrichment classes would, do we think that those would serve as encouragement for us to take more APs? And from what you've kind of seen with attendance as well as learning loss over the summer, especially with math, do you think that it would be worth it for the district to invest in something like summer enrichment classes for APs specifically?
We have looked at increasing our summer enrichment opportunities. I think one of the challenges has been location because of some of the construction. We are hoping that next year, we can reach out to staff for them to suggest possibly some different enrichment opportunities that maybe aren't necessarily for credit. I used to do that many years ago when I was teaching in the district, probably twenty years ago now, where we were asked what kind of enrichment offerings we would do over the summer. I think I did like Math Magic and some other ones. And so we do plan on looking at that again once, that's what we tried to do last year by adding the STEM camp. We actually have some other people who'd be interested in doing some more STEM opportunities, but I do think we'd have many of our high school teachers looking for ones that could enrich for some of those AP as well. I mean, we do plan on sending that out to staff, not this summer, but for the following summer. Great question, thank you.
Do you have another question?
Actually, Victoria, can I ask you a question, just for clarification? So were you talking about like, for students who are about to take an AP math?
Yes.
To get some help during the summer?
Yes.
In preparation for taking the AP class that next school year, is that kind of what you're saying?
Oh, like a bridge type of course for that? I know we would be interested. I mean, we're always looking for opportunities to support students, but if there are students who are, you know, kind of nervous or just want to feel confident before they start an AP class, I think we can definitely look into those opportunities and look at what time commitment that would need to support students. I think we'd have to look into some of the logistics around that. I know we had talked about that in the past, and I thought, it was probably five or six years ago that we offered that a little bit, and then I don't think we saw a very high attendance at that time, but I think that's something we can revisit and ask. I think you remember that as well, right?
I was gonna, I was just getting ready to say, I believe that we did that for a couple of years. I don't remember what the attendance was, but as we looked at, as you guys looked at allowing students to be able to take advantage of honors and AP courses, we did that change in philosophy, that they didn't have to be recommended any longer.
It was when the district was, and I apologize, I was in HR at the time, but that's when we were engaging with equal opportunity schools, and we were gonna see a huge increase in number of students taking AP courses. I think what they found that is a lot of teachers did things right in the beginning of the AP courses to actually try to support students throughout the semester, but it is something we can revisit if, that is something where students feel like they need a little more confidence going into.
Did you have any other questions, Victoria?
Okay, so I'm part of a board, so this one is from another student on Student Advisory Board, but they were wondering why language classes aren't available as summer school courses, especially since those are highly encouraged and required, similar to the social studies courses that are usually popular as summer school courses.
Sure. I wasn't here when they originally designed this, but my understanding was, you know, when we started doing our 204 online schools, this was prior to how much we were doing with the synchronous learning and kind of on, you know, being on for Zoom or Google Meets or those types of things. And so I don't think they felt at the time that learning language kind of remotely without having that synchronous interaction was really the right way to instruct for that course. We did use to engage with COD, and they used to offer courses on our campus, some in math and some in language. Our language ones really didn't get a lot of students interested in, so COD actually did not open a lot of those. I think that is something we could look at, but I think it would have to be done more, somehow where there's a face-to-face component to that. I think that's critical for any type of language courses.
Ms. Fostick.
Thank you for the presentation. I was especially excited to see and hope that we will be able to continue at some point the expressive arts program in the summer. In addition to that academic support, I feel like this supports the students' SEL growth as well, and helps them interact with their family in ways that might be outside of the traditional classroom academic feel. So I was really excited to see that. My only other question is something that I think isn't, isn't really answerable right now, but it's just a question I have.
Sure.
I see that we have the extended school year. I see that we have boost. And I, when reading through this, when we first got the presentation, I didn't know how to interpret the attendance, if that was considered good attendance or if this was poor attendance. And my only comment on that is, have we ever tried to figure out a way to do it either closer to the start of the school year or closer to the end? And I see that there are complicating factors on both ends. I say this mostly as a parent, because the end of July is typically when other summer activities end.
Right.
Right? So if families are going to take time, many times it is during that time, and I wonder how much of an impact that has on attendance.
Right. So there's many challenges around with that. So one of the main challenges, right after the school year's done, we're currently, we do the Twenty-First Century program then, and we do have strong attendance. We typically only have a bus or two for each school at that time, which is different for what we would need for our, our, our summer boost program. I think when we're in a position where our buildings aren't being used as much for construction in the summer, we might have an opportunity if we can have where their home schools offering things. We've got to see how we can divide and conquer with that, if we have enough staff to be at a lot of the schools. But if we weren't relying on transportation, it would be a little bit easier to do that, way more easier to do right after the school year ends. As we get close to the start of the school year, people mostly know when the start of school is for students. Our teachers pretty much start about a week before the students start, and then a week before that is when our new teachers start. So we're typically, where you're seeing the summer boost ending right now is about right where we start with our new teachers going into there and supporting them. We usually do district events with them as well as building events, and many of the buildings, they kind of had informal mentors who were already trying to support our newer teachers at that time. So those are the complications then, and once again, trying to find the staff, but also, you know, building use at that time will also be challenging. And we do find that people want a little bit of a break right before the year gets going again. So I think we'd have a better opportunity right after the school year ends, but transportation would be the challenge competing with ESY. In the past, I, obviously, we heard a lot more about transportation challenges the last couple of years as we've seen way more shortages, but without some of those transportation challenges, we might have a better opportunity, or if schools could identify maybe, you know, when they have an opportunity to run some of those things.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Dumbing.
Thank you so much. The presentation was great and exciting to kind of remember some of the things that we did this summer. Quick question, I remember the excitement of the totes and some of the, how excited the kids were.
Yeah.
Are we gonna be, are the totes gonna be able, available again this year?
Yeah, we, our plan is to do that again this year. Might be our last year, you can see the price that goes with that. We do, we're just engaging into the S R three, which will follow through not the end of this summer, but the end of the following summer, so there is a good chance that we would do that the next two summers and be able to continue with that. I'm not, we didn't get as much feedback on the math as we had on the books in the past, which I do understand, it's a lot easier to pick up a book and read than work through math, but we were hoping, you know, just to give that opportunities, or even that people have those, you know, students have those throughout the year to use. But our plan is to do that again, and especially at early childhood again as well.
Great. I just, I love the family engagement opportunity that you shared, and I think that was really great, Slide eight. I think that was just wonderful because you're so right that often we give things and you don't necessarily have a chance to hear from those that use them. Did, what, what type of engagement was, was it, what type of engagement was?
Yeah, I mean, sometimes you only get a couple of students, and sometimes you get more than that, and students jumping on at different times. So, you know, we always had some attendance, which is a good thing, but we provided a lot of different opportunities. Some were different days of the week, and obviously, different weeks of the year where students could connect at that time.
Okay, and just two other things. One, Slide thirteen, you shared some of the, some of the, let's see, was it, some of the performance, student performance on ELA.
Mm-hmm.
Would love to know, you know, at a future date. Their demographic sectors, psych, psycho. Opportunities to try and share with parents and students differences, the positive.
I have the data, so I can get that data out to the board. I mean, it does. Get down, how did all students perform from that time to that time, and then how did the students in our summer boost program perform from one point to the other? I think some challenges you see with that is the makeup of our students for summer boost is very different, but we can definitely share, we saw some, ELA at middle school was across the board really strong, looking at their growth compared to the growth of all students. And then on other, it was kind of, in some areas, you saw a significant difference, and some areas looks very similar, so, but I'll be glad to send that out to the board.
And the last thing, question I had, I remember talking about the K through eight STEM camps last year, and wondering, if you can just refresh my memory, opportunities for students who didn't have, whose families don't have that necessarily ability for tuition, were, can you remind me, were we able to provide those opportunities to any students of those families?
Yeah, students who are, qualify for a fee waiver during the year, we use that same process for students who offered, I mean, who enrolled for the summer programming as well.
Okay.
It's all through Pushcoin, which makes it quite, makes it a lot easier for us because we already have that information identified in there.
And we'll be able to do that for those students again this summer?
Yeah, and we have a better idea of what we can handle as well, and we, I mean, most of our teachers wanted to do it again. It was a really fun experience, so if you get a chance to stop by on any of those days, it's a lot of smiles to see, which is great.
Thank you.
Mr. Carubus. Nope. Mr. Rising.
Yeah, Doug, so just following up on one of Ms. Dumbing's last questions. Evaluation of how the students do or kind of measuring, if these are last year's numbers that we're looking at for boost, I mean, isn't the real true test IAR scores, which they won't be, which we won't have till the spring, right? I mean, is that kind of maybe the true?
I mean, I don't know if it's the true, you know, I Ready is what we do three times during the year.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
We, it's a standardized test.
Okay.
We do it, this is our, so this is the first time ever we took it in the fall, because remember, it was a new, new assessment we started using last year, and so we, we did it last winter, last spring, and now this fall is the first time we've done it in the fall. So it's a brand-new assessment for us, but it's helping us to really try to look down, it breaks down, it breaks down data for us a little bit better, so we can really identify, you know, different areas of how students are performing.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I would love to see that data too, if you can pull it together just because.
Yeah.
I think the I Ready data might give us some trending on how they may or may not do on IAR as well.
Yeah, some of it's, you know, it's, like I said, it's a newer assessment for us, and when I went in to try to look at, okay, a student who was, let's say, in the fortieth percentile in third grade, in, typical of any student taking I Ready in the spring, and then trying to look at how that, any students in that category would have done in the fourth grade in the fall, and you're trying to look at, like, across the board in ELA, you might have seen that those students typically grew three points, but in math, the typical growth might have been negative one, you know, which isn't obviously typical growth or just not the kind of growth you want to see, but that, that is common in math where you see that that happens over the summer, because more kids typically read over the summer than do math, and so you do see. You do, you know, so there, I can try to show those charts as well, I'll have to ask the expert, Charles, to help with that, but I do have just those points in time where you can see that information.
I would also be very careful about trying to connect it to IAR.
Yeah.
And here is why, it's a boost program, so it's, it is preparing the students for the work that they're gonna do in the fall, so that they come in sort of ahead. That's really where you want them to be.
Yeah.
And so that they continue to run ahead and as opposed to fall behind. So I would be more concerned about the I Ready, which it showed to work very well, than I would from IAR.
A better comparison for us might be that we can try to do for next summer. I wish we would have done it this summer, and it's just, I take fault for it. If we would have looked at the students who we invited who did not attend, and then tried to see their growth compared to our students who did attend, their growth, or even do that by attendance, I think we can prepare ahead of time for that next year. We just have to collect student ID numbers for us to be able to run and do that, those comparisons, which we didn't do from this last time. We didn't maintain a list of the students we invited that didn't attend, and that's something that I would get out in front of for next year.
Okay.
I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I didn't expect that long for one question. Okay, so.
I want to jump in if I may, just on that point. This reminds me of the phrase, you know, not all things that are measurable count, and not all things that count are measurable.
Right.
And so there's a lot of great work that's going on here that's not related to test scores, and so I don't want to discourage our use and of the program when we're dealing with other things like family engagement and mental health, and obviously, there's a way to measure some of that with attendance, but I, I think getting away from test scores in this area, we're talking about boosting, but I think I also don't want to do like a scientific study where we exclude these students and see if they, academics is not where you can do a control group.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of this is making connections and trying to have learning be fun for students. Thank you for bringing that up, Board Member Carubus. One of, if you do get an opportunity, I mean, I know I said stop by the STEM camp. If you stop at any of our boosts, you will see smiles. I mean, Katie Pop offered to be one of our site coordinators this year, she was over at Georgetown, and as soon as it was done, was like, I want to do it again next year. It is, I mean, kids are having fun learning, and it is great to observe and see them engage in school and have those fun opportunities. Summer learning is a little bit more relaxed at times, I think because they don't feel some of the same pressures with assessments and testing that you might see throughout the year, but.
And then Slide thirteen?
Yep.
Which I think has been looked at before, it's still up there. Yeah, I mean, I would be lying if I said I wasn't concerned about maybe the students that attended every day. I understand it's summer, you know, and the daily average attendance rate seems a little low, but then I, but then I compare boost to the STEM camp where people are on a waiting list and they probably don't miss a day, right? So, you know, it gets to kind of one of those things where, given the groups, that a majority are. So, you know, I, it gets to kind of one of those things where, given the groups that a majority are attending the, the, the boost. Which is, you know, your low income, your I E P students, your English, language learners, your chronically absent students. You know, do we, do we really need to impress more on those parent groups possibly? Like, you know, this, this is really important that, that you attend because.
I will say this.
But you don't want to make it, you don't want to put a lot of pressure, right? Because you want it to be fun, like you said. But, but the lack of attendance, if they're already low attendance.
I, I, I think there's a lot of things that are going on for students and families that, you know, we look at, try to supporting. Both at the elementary and middle school, the things that I heard immediately is that we should probably have a social worker on site. For summer school as well, for students who need supports. Because they don't just need supports during the school year and they need it during the summer as well. Many of these students who are invited to our, our summer programs need that. And so that is something that we're looking at adding for this summer, is trying to identify whether we can get some social work supports in our summer buildings as well.
And then did you say on slide eighteen that you were considering possibly lowering the number of days of boost for elementary and middle school?
Not elementary, middle school and high school. Not necessarily the hours, we're not set on that, but that, those are some things we're considering right now to see if we would get more that we attend, commit to it.
Well, that, that's what I was gonna, I was gonna say, if you, if you lower the number of days, could you also keep the number of days, but bring in double the number of students? You following me? So like, if you're, if you have, you know, four hundred kids for twelve days, well, could you make it six days for four hundred kids each? And two, just two different groups of four hundred kids? I'm trying to just maximize as many.
Yeah, we're not getting people to accept the invitations currently. But we will continue to try. And we will service all students who need it. So it's not, we're not cutting off students for summer boost and not providing those supports. We, we did get worried about whether we'd be able to meet the needs of all the students with our staff recruitment, to be honest. So that's the other thing that, that plays into this. And trying to be able to, you know, support all students is ensuring that we have enough staff to support students as well. Because we try to have low class sizes as well. We try to keep that under fifteen students, because we feel that is also another way to build relationships in a short amount of time. And try to really meet some of the academic needs as well.
And then just one last comment, slide twenty. I cannot speak highly enough about our online summer school. Both my daughters took multiple courses, I think almost every single course that's there, except for maybe geometry and music theory. But these classes are so beneficial for our students. Because it allows them to take some of these requirements that they have to have for graduation. It allows them to take a lot of those A P or honors courses or elective courses, the engineering courses or music or choir. That if we did not have this online summer learning, those students wouldn't be able to take so many of the offerings that we have. You know, I would be, you know, depending on what happens, of course, with the, with the boost and, and the, some of the summer learning things. You know, I would be interested to see if there's interest again in some of that math enrichment for some of those students. But I can see where language would be a hard thing to do over the summer. Because it is so much synchronous instruction that you, I mean, with, with a lot of this online summer course stuff. It is a lot of self-directed and on your own kind of learning. That's really kind of hard to do when you're talking about a language. So I, I could see where that would be difficult. But kudos to the online learning and I, and I hope we continue that for years to come. Thanks.
That's all I have.
Ms. Grover.
Hi Doug. I'm glad that we're able to offer resources to students so they're ready the next year. Seeing that the numbers of students that we invited for the boost programs, not everyone was accepting of it. And along the same lines as Victoria, getting a, a head start for those students who might not be invited, but may need a help. Are, are people allowed to, or can, if they're, if all the numbers aren't fulfilled, is there an opportunity for those students? Who may want to get help? Because if they take, say, not A P level, because say I'm talking about middle school. But they have Project Arrow accelerated math, so they need maybe a help with that. Are they able to join these programs?
I don't think these would necessarily be beneficial for students who are looking for accelerated placement opportunities. That'd be really difficult to say. I think more, I mean, we, I think you're talking about maybe more readiness courses for that accelerated coursework. We can look into that. I, I know we're, we're kind of, you know. I think we would have some similar challenges in recruitment and staffing, but that's something we can look into.
Or not even for the accelerator, for just regular math courses. Sometimes, you know, you're on the cusp where you're not really invited, but you need that help. So for those parents where they have an op, if you don't have the space, I mean, if you, if all the spaces aren't utilized, I'm just kind of wondering.
I'm, I, so I know some of our high schools have tried to offer a boost program for kids, students who are new to A P. That has been something that the schools have looked into doing. Signing up for a summer school class, if you so desire your child to be in a summer school class, you can sign up for it. It may not be though for a program as an acceleration type of thing. I think it would be very, kid by kid, student by student basis, I think you'd have to look at it to determine what would be appropriate for a child.
Okay, great. And then along the same lines as this slide twenty, I would love to see an expansion if we could on some of the courses. Because these courses, I mean, they're great, where language is going to be a requirement, I think, in the coming up graduation requirements, I think, in a few years. If we can expand that somehow, just looking into some of the courses that will maybe, I don't, I think health is a requirement. I don't know if health can be taken online, that would be great. And then my last thing, it's a comment, I don't know if this would work, but is, can we get student teachers? Would this be, if they taught in the summer, would that be an opportunity for student teaching?
No, most universities aren't doing student teaching over the summer.
Okay.
We've looked at other opportunities. Currently, we've looked at with our Grow Your Own, or if we can have teachers in the pipeline. But it would really be more, more be like internship, paid internship. And great for their resume, just to have an extra set of hands in there. You know, if, if we have reached out through our recruitment efforts of, sometimes we hire people anytime, you know, March, April, May. And see if they're interested in teaching in the summer as well, before they start the year. A lot of times, new graduates want to try to make some money as soon as possible. And if they can do it in a, a field that they're familiar with, you know, many will. So we do, and, and honestly, many of our summer teachers are also, they're certified teachers, but they might be in different positions for us during the year as well. So, you know, we're always looking at any opportunity we can to get qualified staff members in there. It is, I, I do think we'll see a little bit of a change possibly when construction projects are done. And I think sometimes if you're able to teach in your own room in your own school, a lot of times people are more willing to do that than to try to, you know, go to other places. And what that's going to look like and so on. Just like, I think that could impact our attendance at the same time when we're in that situation. I, I can probably break down the data to look if we had higher attendance for people where the school was, the school they're familiar with. I'd be interested to, to see that as well.
Thank you. Thanks Doug.
So Doug, you talked a little bit about E S Y. And I thought it would be helpful just for the audience that maybe is watching or whatever to explain what that is.
I apologize. So extended school year, we have students who have I E Ps. Where based on a team decision in their I E P, if they identified that they need additional learning over the summer. Where it looks like that they would digress over the summer, that that can help try to reduce some of that summer slide. That is a team decision with the parents and the, the special education teams at the building, that they identify through the I E P process if they qualify for extended school year. And that is all delivered by special education teachers. We offer it for all across K through twelve. We typically start that about a week after the school year ends. Leading up to that is kind of preparation by the teachers, because they might not have the same teacher they have during the year. So reviewing their I E Ps, looking at what their needs are. And that continues to, all the way up until that week before we start the summer boost. We have a lot of students who attend and it requires quite a bit of transportation. Because they're also, I think they, I think they only use three to four locations because of how they need to support the students.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's an important, I mean, it's not called summer school or summer program, but it really is, yeah. So it's a big help for our students in the district. The teachers that teach in these programs, they're all from two oh four, or can they be from other districts?
Most of them are in two oh four. As I said, they might not be in teaching positions for us. Some have been instructional students who are qualified to be teachers who do that. We have had some people who, they were student teachers here, they taught summer school, but then they got hired in another district and asked if they could teach summer school again for us. We had a couple of those last year. But almost all of them, the majority of them are our own employees and the majority of them are, are teachers.
I do, just listening to the presentation and the title of the different opportunities, it did just come across as a lot of fun. You know, it's like things that students would be like interested in, they would be doing something that, I mean, school should always be fun for everyone. But it seems like these make its own, like a really, you know, not your traditional learning environment.
You get a chance to stop by any, I mean, anytime throughout the summer, you can see that we're offering something. So if you ever want to stop in somewhere, just ask me and I can let you know what's going on.
Yeah, I do agree, the board got a lot of feedback on those totes and really, I mean, I, you know, I think that a lot of people were surprised by those. And it was just a very unexpected welcomed item.
Dr. Bell puts a lot into those totes too.
I also, I mean, I was looking at slide sixteen too. And like, you have, music theory has pretty low attendance. I mean, is, how do you evaluate whether you're going to offer the class or not?
I, I think you do look at the, the numbers. I, I, I thought our minimum number was twenty, but I can double check with Lauren Island about, we try to open up every course. And sometimes you can make up, you know, if you have enough in another area, you can open another one with a little bit lower attendance. You know, like the fifty-three in psychology, you, you might have two sections there at twenty-six and twenty-seven. Which makes it a little bit easier to open music theory, because you're really just trying to cover the cost of your teachers and your programs. You know, we have, we use Canvas to support that. So you really look at how much does it cost us to host Canvas? And then how much does it cost to pay our teachers both for planning and instructional time? And if you, we're, we're just trying to break even. We don't do any of these to try to profit. We're getting to that point with online learning that after this summer, we will have to look at, do we need to increase that slightly? It's been at that price for quite some time.
So how do you figure when you're going to offer a new class, a new add to the list?
I, you, you need to look and see, can you do a viable, effective offering that can be done, you know, online? Where the students are going to have quite a bit of agency and ownership in that. And not having a, a lot of set times for things. You have, you know, some set times, but a lot of it, they can control their learning opportunities. So you have to look if it's a course that can be done that way. You know, I'll have to get a little bit more information about what kind of requests are put out there. We also look, you know, we offer some during the year. They're, the popularity of the ones there in the year has decreased a little bit. But we've seen it be quite a bit more popular over the summer. And so, you know, we, we, a lot of that, we get feedback from our directors of guidance and, and working with our department chairs about what are possibilities, so.
And I agree with Mr. Rising's comment, I mean, these are beneficial to students. It allows them to take other, you know, things that they're interested in and mark off an elective or requirement that they have to fulfill. I also though know that, at least, I remember my kids took government and consumer economics online. Also, they, I, the word was, are easier to take online than in person? I don't know if that's true or not, but, you know, I'd be interested in knowing. Like, is the average grade higher online than if you take it in the class?
We might get to ask Victoria what she hears.
Is that the rumor still or no?
Yeah, that is kind of the rumor that it's my, I don't know if this is telling on anyone, but my honors English teacher last year told us to take it. Because she said that it's easier online. And she said that, she was like, my kid never gets ninety-eights and he got a ninety-eight in government over the summer, so.
I mean, it's okay to like get good grades or whatever. So I, I just want to make sure it's as rigorous and everything is what you would get if you were in the classroom.
Yeah, I, I do think, I mean, oftentimes you might be taking one class at a time instead of a full load at a time. So I think there's sometimes where it can appear easier because that's where your whole focus is. So I wouldn't, you know, take it as just because it's an online course. I, I do think students like to have ownership. And I know what it's like when I'm trying to work on six things at one time versus one thing at one time. And it sure seems a lot easier to work on one thing at one time, but.
Well, that's it. Thank you very much. Very important program for us. Does anyone have any legislative advocacy or Board of Education updates? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
Hotline in favor? Any oppose? Okay, we are adjourned.
Fabulous job, yes.